All right, Commissioner, anytime you're ready.
Okay. Slowly. Again, would you lead us in the pledge today when we're ready?
Slow.
All right, looks like we're ready to go. We'd like to welcome everybody out to our Iron County Commission meeting this morning. This Monday, the fourteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-five. Appreciate everybody's attendance. We'll begin with a word of prayer offered by Gina Bartholomew. And following her prayer, our Sheriff Ken Carpenter will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we meet today in this meeting, we are thankful for the blessings that they have sent us and that they watch over us. We're thankful for the moisture that some are receiving. We ask that that we might have some with our areas to be able to contain these fires that we're having. Ask that a blessing beyond the commissioners today as they go through the agenda and make the decisions that they need to do, that they have the citizens of Iron County in their hearts. As a special blessing on our firefighters and our first responders as they continue to fight these fires that we have. And please bless them and watch over them that they might be safe and be able to get these fires under control. We say this name Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeanie.
I'll do Jean, I think, sorry. Please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what were the date on those minutes, John?
Twenty-third of June.
So I'll entertain a motion if there's any discussion on the minutes for to approve for the twenty-third of June. Is there any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for the approval of the minutes from the June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second motion.
It moved to second, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. And then also a motion for the approval of claims for payment from June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five to July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion for approval of claims for payments from June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five to July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
It's been moved in second and all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go to our departmental reports and we'll start off with the fair. Is Jamie, he's came sneaking in back there?
Back here.
Thank you.
Hello, how are you guys today?
Good.
Okay, so we are off to a great year again this year. We do have two new, two new office staff from last year and so we're getting them trained again. It's hard because they have never really planned a fair each year. And so when you're training new people, it's hard to kind of get them, their minds wrapped around really what happens at the fair. But they're both doing great. They've jumped right in and, and willing to learn and, and help, help with the fair. So we're, we're still training and learning the new system and software. We, we get to a point and then we'll call them and do another training and, and, and learn a little bit more on the system. And, and it's going good. It's just all, it's very customizable to, to every department that uses it. And so, so every little event takes a lot of preparing it and getting it ready. But once we have those done, it should be good from, from each year. So for fair, for the fairground updates, we've cleaned up the front, the front grounds by the clinic. We removed some old trees. They cut those down. And it looks really good. They've flattened it out. We had a couple of water lines break under the asphalt midway. We got those fixed. And we've had a few water spigots rust out back behind the, the stalls. And so we've got those replaced and, and fixed last week. The maintenance department is great helping. They jump right in if we ever need help and then come over and help us with anything we need as well as the work crew. We've been cleaning up behind Exhibit Building where the Conex boxes are. We've brought in loads and loads of dirt, dirt to kind of fill that up. And getting ready to pour the concrete pad in the back so it's easier to pull in the tables and chairs from the Conexes to the Exhibit Building. The twenty-five-year master plan is moving forward. We have, we've been having bi-weekly meetings on those since April. And the plan is to finish that up in September. We're hoping to have plans ready so that we can show the master plan to the, display it to the public during the fair. The theme for this year is adventure weights at the Iron County Fair. And the grand marshals this year are Bill and Debbie Grimm. Bill passed away in June, but we still would like to honor him along with Debbie this year. They've both done so much for the fair and the county that we felt that this is a well-deserved honor for both of them. We held the Miss Rodeo Contest in June and we had, we have a really good court for them this year. This year we limited it to Iron County residents or students that attended an Iron County school. And we had a really good turnout and it's really nice to see them going out and supporting all of the local events within, within Iron County. So you see them out just willing to, to do anything at these events. And so it's, it's great. The Miss Iron County Contest will be held August ninth and we have five queen contestants and six teens for that one. And then on August sixteenth, we have the ATV and UTV excursion, the trail ride and the demo derby. And August twenty-fourth, we have, we're holding the Little Buck Crew. This will be the second year that we moved it to Saturday. And it's, it's quite nice for the parents and the kids not to be up really late on that Thursday night. So that same day is the Mud Boggs and we brought in a new group of local people to help run that this year. They're from Cedar and then we've got one guy here in Parowan that's, that's jumped on board to help with that one. The team sorting, we'll have them come back and they'll be in the arena that night for the team sorting competition. On August twenty-seventh, we have the Woody Wednesday Team Roping and the twenty-eighth, the forty barrel race. That's coming back again for the second time, second time. And then August twenty-ninth through the thirtieth and September first is the PRC rodeo, the dances, the carnival and all of the entertainment that comes with that Sunday evening program. August thirtieth, we're, we're doing the deaf and hard of hearing again. They're coming for that rodeo. And they'll, they'll be here and they'll have two interpreters there and they're planning on about seventy-five of them again to be there. So that's kind of fun to bring them in and have the ability to know what's going on at the rodeo with interpreters. So for sponsorship this year, we've been doing really good. So far we have sixteen new sponsors that have never sponsored before and nine sponsors have increased their sponsorship. So we have, we've never had a diamond before. So we have our first diamond, that's ten thousand dollar sponsorship that came in. We have four platinums, seventeen gold, twenty-three silver, twenty-four bronze, fifteen copper and eight iron, total of ninety-two sponsors so far this year. At a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred. So our, our budget goal for this year was a hundred thousand. So we're, we're over that one. That's, that's, that's nice. We are finalizing the vendors for the different events for the Mud Bog and Demo and the Midway during the fair. We've got two rodeos in the Ranch Rodeo Series so far. We did one on May thirtieth and we just had one Saturday, July twelfth. They, we've had ten teams in both of those, which has been a lot of fun. The next rodeos are on the August eighth and the thirtieth. And they, they've really enjoyed those series. Another new event that we are doing on Monday, Labor Day, is the Boots and Buddies. It's an assisted rodeo for special needs. So they'll come in and we'll hold a little rodeo for them up two o'clock in the afternoon on Monday where we moved the PRC rodeo back to seven on Monday. So we had a little spare spot in the arena and that, that would be a fun, fun event to do. So the Color Country OHV Jamboree, so far we've got twelve, twelve registered. I kind of looked back the last couple of years to see when the registrations really started coming in. And most of them came in the first part of September, the last of August. And so we, we've really been pushing and promoting that a little more. So hopefully that'll get some more registrations coming in for that one. The Spanish Trails Rodeo, last year we did that one in September. We had originally planned on doing it in June, but they had called and said, I just don't think we can get it together quite that fast. And so we did it in September. But this year we did it in June and I think it, it was, it was nice to have it in June instead of September. And it just keeps growing every year and, and getting better. So I think that's all I have for you. If you've got any questions, go from there.
Thank you.
All right.
Rocking and rolling.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Plan is exciting for the new facilities. It's looking good.
Spencer will report on our fire.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Spencer Olo. Going to give you guys as much of a detailed report as I can for the things we got going on. So fires this year, this is a summarization of incidents in the Iron County unincorporated private lands. I ran this report from January first to July ninth. So there has been a few extra fires this over the weekend. But so in two thousand twenty-four, we had twenty-nine human starts and nine natural starts for a total of thirty-eight fires in the unincorporated private lands. So far this year in two thousand twenty-five, we've had seven human start fires for a total of, of seven fires, zero natural starts. We haven't had the lightning pull-up yet. But I did want to add too, we've had twenty-two overall total fires in the county and that's all agencies. So that's BLM, Forest and Park Service. Seven of those are ours. Some statistical causes of the fire is debris burning is, is one, one that is a, an occurring and probably going to be a reoccurring as we have escaped debris burning fires. And then some other human starts that we've had, we've had, we did have one camp, one escaped campfire. Some farming equipment and utilities for the other five fires. Some of our prevention education programs that we participated in, Life Safety Week back in April, we participated in that. We've had some HOA outreach with a couple of HOA communities talking about their CWS or their CWPP, excuse me. Their Wildland Fire Councils and then just their general community wildfire risks with House Bill forty-eight coming out with this woo-woo stuff. We're trying to, you know, prep the communities for that as that's coming down the pipes. So we've reached out to a few and we do have a few more meetings scheduled that will, will continue to hit those HOAs and those outlining communities. Some public awareness campaigns that we've just recently done is we did send out a fire message with the annual tax bill July first. We'll continue to, to reach out and find opportunities to, to reach the public. Some of our recommendations for fire prevention areas is debris burning. We continue to have issues with folks not realizing that they, they are required to have a burn permit. Oftentimes that, that is what is the statistical cause for our escape debris burns because they don't get a permit. They don't realize that the, you know, the weather, fire weather watch and stuff like that are in, in place. They go burn their piles and, and then they escape and then we end up showing up. So with the, the burn permits, we can really catch some of that stuff and educate the, the public when they're getting those burn permits of, hey, we have high wind warnings, things like that. So we're going to continue to, to try to hone in on some of those, those debris burning stuff. Training is another one that we, we enhance our preparation for local fire departments for initial attack to continue to try to help them respond quicker, give them the tools that they need and the, and the capabilities. Fire prevention signs, we've, we've realized that there's a lack of signage around the county. So we're working with our, our, our county sign individual to make some more signs to, to get more signage up in the county to help, help with our messaging. So we can't be in every place at once, but our signs can, can stay there and, and be at that message for us. Continue to collaborate with local businesses such as, you know, our, our power companies and utility companies to enhance their wildfire plans. And then continue our community engagement. So maintain and expand our existing fire prevention and education program outreach. Let's try to reach as many folks as we possibly can, both utilizing our, our county resources and the, the state resources. Moving on from our fire and prevention, we're going to go into CWS updates. So this is our, our annual participation contribution to the, the cooperative wildfire system. So this year in two thousand twenty-five, our, our PCD increased to five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to stay in the CWS program with FFSL. So this budget reflects a comprehensive approach to mitigating wildfire risk and ensuring effective response, response capabilities. So some key areas of expenditure include maintaining high-trained workforce. So helping our fire departments get the, the tools and knowledge that they need. Acquiring and maintaining specialized equipment such as, you know, mastication equipment to, to further our, our mitigation stuff. And implementing proactive fuels reduction projects. So this, so far this year in the report, I'll start at the prevention. We allocated about fifty-two thousand dollars for prevention and education. So far this, to date, we've, we've spent four hundred and seven dollars for a percentage of one in our, in our CWS, our preparedness. We've allocated a hundred and sixty-six thousand of that. That's to boost our equipment and our training. So far this year, we've, we're at forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars for an eight percent total. And then mitigation is our big one with three hundred and sixty thousand allocated to that. And so far this year, we've spent two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four for a total of forty-two percent. And I'll kind of break that down, what we, what we got going on with our mitigation projects. So right now we've got our Antelope Springs project, which is our, which is our big one. It's a hundred and eighty-five acres. We're doing that in-house with our own, our own county equipment. So far we've completed seventy-five acres of that for a total of seven hundred hours. And what's nice about us doing that in-house is we can use a lot of that in-kind hours towards our PC without spending hard dollars. So we've also partnered with the, the landowner and, and they got a grant to do the seeding and, and stuff on that. So being able to utilize two different funding sources to complete that.
Using a bull hog on the track hole mostly for that?
Yep. So what we've done is we've actually purchased another piece of equipment. It's a skid steer with a, a mastication head, a bull hog head. And then our, our current excavator that's got a bull hog head. So we've got the two machines out there working, which
Is this just along roadways or is it just?
No, this one is, is kind of a, a combination. So this project is what we call a landscape project. So it's, it's a large landscape scaled projects. So Antelope Springs is a watershed area. So it's helping improve the watershed as well as a high-risk area. We also have the utilities out there. So we've got power lines, gas utilities, plus the community just outside on that. What is the west side of Antelope Springs there? So it's kind of a combination of stuff. Roadways is another one that's, that it's being utilized for as well. So along the Antelope Spring Road there. So, yep. And we, we do look at, we are looking at a couple of other projects. One project we do have that we're looking at right now is over here at Red Canyon. There's a piece of county property right, right there at the entrance going into Red Canyon. We're looking at that, that piece. And then inside the community itself, we've got a couple of landowners and a common area that we're going to go in and, and try to clean up. Hopefully we can use our machines because it goes a little bit quicker. But in that common area, there may be some hand treatment, contract work going on in there. And then moving on to our, our future project with CW, CWPPs and CWS. So with CWS, we, we try to attach our CWPP goals to what we're doing with CWS and how we're spending that money. This year our CWPP is up for review and, and to update it. And so we're going to be working on that and then in the coming months, which most of you here will be involved in that. And then is what we do is we make SMART goals and how we can achieve our CWS agreement with the state and how we can, how we can achieve fuel management as well as equipment. So we'll be doing that and we'll be looking at the high-risk like woo-woo areas moving forward. Especially with the, the House Bill coming out with the, with the woo-woo fee that's coming, coming. So how we can help the community and, and utilizing our CWS to, to help with that. So that's my end of report. Happy to answer any questions.
Good report. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Spencer.
Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John, just a second here to pull up the PowerPoint pride. If you just go to the next slide there, John. Under current law enforcement issues, Metro SWAT team has been serving quite a few search and rest warrants in other high-risk calls in conjunction with the Drug Task Force. We just had one last week that yielded a mushroom grow and recovered some, some firearms. So far this year, they've had nine call-outs to date. Like I say, we're using four-man teams for task force arrests just to make sure that everybody stays safe. Lieutenant Sean Peterson is our new SWAT team commander. We'd like to thank Sergeant Nate Williams for his twenty-two years of service with the Army Metro SWAT team as the past commander. Drug Task Force has been very active with multiple drug arrests and weapons seized. In one case alone last month, they seized fifty-seven firearms along with drugs in one particular case. And that's getting to be kind of the normal is that, you know, a lot of our drug, drug arrests, we're also finding weapons involved with them. The Iron County Sheriff's Office is now a member of the Washington County Task Force Bomb Squad. We've joined that because of our explosive detection dog that we've gotten service currently. And with that, the Task Force is going to be funding a second explosive detection dog, which has been really a huge benefit for the region. We've, we've supported a number of events down in Washington County, helped UHP in sweeping the Capitol and doing, doing other functions around the state. So it's, it's been a big benefit to us so far. Under current law enforcement issues, these are our current stats. The first number is from year to date. The second number was total from last year for two thousand twenty-four. So if, if you look in, in most categories, we're pretty close or above in most categories, which reflects the growth of the county and just how much busier it's getting. Just let you take a look at that. Down at the, the bottom, our total number of reports is four thousand eighty-two for the first half of the year. There were six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine last year, again, which really reflects how busy our deputies are.
So on the line of air support, it's twenty-three this year and six last year.
Yeah.
What, what classifies as an air support situation?
It can be anything, whether we've got air flying support as an overwatch for a SWAT mission. Whether it's searching for a missing person, it could be any number of things. If it's helping us to locate, you know, drug grows, whatever it is. We, we use them for a very wide variety of things. And it's, it's helped for us too because we have our partnership with SUU Aviation, which has been huge.
Is that the majority of those calls?
That's a part of it. But the second part is, is that we now have a DPS helicopter that's located in St. George. And so it's, it's made it really convenient for us to get air support where in the past we haven't had that air support available for a lot of the things that we're using it for currently.
So the, the increase in the number is driven by the availability of them also?
More, more of the availability, yeah. The Utah Sheriff's Association went back to Washington DC in May and met with our Utah representatives and senators. Some of the things that we talked about was the problem that we're seeing with federal agency rulemaking and how we can help curtail that or keep it under control. Some of the public lands issues that we face, especially here in, in Southern Utah where so much of our lands are, are public, public lands. Border issues and how they're still affecting our local communities. And then in addition, Representative Malloy set it up for us to meet with the heads of the FBI, DEA, ICE, Forest Service and BLM leadership, which was huge for us. And really helped us, especially in ICE where we have not been able to work with the former Director for Utah's ICE, Michael Bernacki. And through our meeting with ICE and, and the White House on that, Mr. The first number is uh from year to date. The second number was total from last year for twenty twenty-four. Uh so if you if you look in in most categories, we're pretty close or above uh in most categories, which reflects the growth of the county and just how much busier it's getting. Just let you take a look at that. Down at the the bottom, our total number of revo- reports is four thousand eighty-two for the first half of the year. Uh there were six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine last year, again, which really reflects how busy uh our deputies are.
So on the line of air support, it's twenty-three this year and six last year.
Yeah.
What what classifies as an air support situation?
It can be anything, whether we've got uh air flying support as a Overwatch for a SWAT uh mission, whether it's uh searching for a missing person. Uh it could be any number of things. If it's helping us to locate, you know, drug grows, whatever it is, it we we use them for a a very wide variety of things. And it's it's helped for us too because we have our partnership with S U Aviation, which has been huge.
Is that the majority of those calls?
That's a part of it. But the second part is is that we now have a D P S helicopter that's located in Saint George. And so it's it's made it really convenient for us to get air support where in the past we haven't had uh that air support available for a lot of the things that that we're using it for currently.
So the the increase in the number is driven by the availability of them also?
More more the availability, yeah. The Utah Sheriff's Association went back to Washington, D.C. in May and met with our Utah representatives and senators. Uh some of the things that we talked about was the uh problem that we're seeing with federal agency rulemaking and how we can help curtail that or keep it under control. Uh some of the public lands issues that we face, especially here in in uh southern Utah, where so much of our lands are are public public lands, uh border issues and how they're still affecting our local communities. And then in addition, uh Representative Malloy set it up for us to meet with the heads of the F B I, D E A, ICE, Forest Service and B L M leadership, which was huge for us. And uh really helped us, especially in ICE, uh where we have not been able to work with the former Director for Utah's ICE, Michael Bernacki. And through our uh meeting with ICE and and the White House on that, uh Mr. Bernacki has been removed from his uh position. And a new ICE director has been put in place who is much more uh willing to work with Utah sheriffs. So we think that that's going to be huge and in uh working with ICE in the future.
How long has Bernacki been?
I'm sorry?
How long had it had Bernacki been in?
He'd been there for quite a while, uh it's several years now. So I I don't know exactly how many, but. Uh we'd been struggling. This is kind of an example of the rulemaking of of some of these federal agencies. Uh OSHA had made a ru- rule that was going to destroy uh volunteer programs like our search and rescue programs and whatnot. And uh we've finally been able to get that under control and that's been uh set aside. So we're back to being able to maintain our search and rescue. But it would have destroyed our ability to have search and rescue, which would have been detrimental to anybody that that comes and needs those services. Uh another one was the F C C ruling, which was uh limiting how jails can record inmate phone calls and and other things, which is a huge safety risk for uh our our staff in the jails and for inmates. And uh through uh the National Sheriff's Office's support, no, I'm sorry, the National Sheriff's Association and the Attorney General's Office support uh through lawsuit, that's been stayed uh until twenty twenty-seven. So it's under review and we're hopeful that that will be uh overturned as well. Youth homes are becoming a huge uh struggle for us here in in Iron County. This was a slide that I showed the last time I reported, which kind of showed the numbers from uh twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three as far as cost. So for uh twenty twenty-three, it cost the Sheriff's Office about twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars responding to calls in in youth homes. Uh whereas the the previous year in twenty twenty-two, it was about a thousand three hundred and four dollars. And what that really reflects is the number of youth homes that have moved out of the cities and into the county. And so we're ending up having to to deal with the problems of these youth homes. Here are some of the numbers uh so far year to date. Assaults thirty-three, runaways thirty, sex offenses fifteen, juvenile problems ten, child abuse five, suicidal ideations three, disorderly conduct, uh aggravating assault. You know, we we have a number of things that so our total numbers of our deputies responding was three hundred and forty-seven point eight hours. At a cost so far year to date, twenty-six thousand eighty-five dollars, which is about eight and a half weeks of a single deputy's time spent just dealing with youth homes. So it's it's it it requires a lot from the Sheriff's Office in order to to deal with the problems that are are facing these youth homes. Our current strength of patrol is currently we're up to strength. We have three in post, uh we're potentially losing uh five, uh some to the federal agencies, U.S. Marshals Office, Forest Service, another Arizona law enforcement agency. Now we have uh three that we're looking at that are already post-certified, which hopefully we'll be able to fill those numbers quickly as we need to. Uh we recently uh retired one of our drug slash patrol canine teams and are going to be needing to replace that. So we'll be going to the task force asking for for funding to replace that dog. And then, like I say, we're receiving money for a second explosive detection dog from uh the Bomb Squad in Washington County.
Typically, how many years does a dog stay in service?
Usually about eight. We usually have them about eight and then they start getting to the age where they're just not as effective. They start to have medical problems and things like that. So we we go ahead and retire them. Sometimes we can get a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, depending on the dog and its health.
Ken, you're, you know, the couple I introduced you to, John Johnson, that's the K nine Ace Canine that uh I introduced you to that does the dog censoring on the vehicles for the heat. Have you have you, I I know he's been really involved in a big remodel on the, but he's about done with that, so.
Oh, yeah.
He's a really nice guy and I, any of your events with your canines, they'll be all over it and help and.
Yeah, we appreciate it. We just had a uh, yeah, uh friends of Iron County Canine that sponsored our uh uh canines in the park, up at City Park. And we had a great turnout there, had a lot of great dog demonstrations and and uh, you know, it's a lot of fun. It's a good event for the community and and we get a lot of support from the community at that. We're we're very grateful for all that support. Some of our future ops and concerns, uh personnel, Cedar City just approved a five percent raise for officers and we're already about three percent uh over the Sheriff's Office. So that's starting to to make a pretty substantial uh uh pay increase that the city has above the Sheriff's Office that we're gonna need to watch. Uh with our vehicles, we received the three new trucks on grant. And we would like to see that money put aside to help purchase armored vehicles to replace the M wraps that we currently have that are becoming aged and and are really so big that they're pretty burdensome, hard to hard to get around to some of these sites. It'd be much, much uh better for us to be able to have bar cats, but they're close to half a million dollars apiece and we'd need to buy two of them uh eventually. So as we're able to get grant money on on some of our patrol vehicles, we'd like to see that money set aside for uh the purchase of bar cats if we're able to. Uh as you know, that we broke ground on the sheriff's complex, you know, with the projected completion date in July of twenty twenty-seven. Uh the gel pods are now complete and they're finishing up the groundwork. So hopefully, they'll be pouring concrete out there soon and we'll be able to see things starting to to go up in the next couple of months. You know, that's all I have at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
On these youth homes, so more have moved into the county? Are you also, are they also the ones that have moved into the county having more more problems or are they just more?
That we're just, we're constantly, we're constantly dealing with them. I mean, it's it's pretty much uh if not every day, every week that we're dealing with runaways. We're dealing with assaults, we're dealing with assaults on staff, we're dealing with uh sexual assaults, you know, uh kids on kids, uh sexual assaults. We're, we just have a whole host of things that we're dealing with. And it's frustrating to the youth home staff members because they're largely governed by the state. And the state doesn't let them do things to be able to control these kids. And something needs to change, you know, because it's 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 difficult for for these uh youth centers to be able to to control them because of the rut, because of the regulations that are regulating them. And most of the kids aren't even from our state. Most of them are from coming from other states and yet we're we're the dumping ground for them. And it's it's a huge problem and it's just getting bigger. So uh I'm not sure, you know, what the what the answer is, but I I think that the Utah State legislation needs to do something to to make it possible for these youth homes to be able to to discipline the kids and hold them accountable and be able to to control them. You know, but they're they're just not. So we end up being the ones that have to deal with them and we're dealing with them all the time. And so it's a continual continual problem for us.
They charge a lot of money for those.
Lot of money.
Is there any kind of legislation we could pass to impose a some kind of a fee on on each center?
I'm I'm not sure, I I'm not sure, you know, what the answer is there, but.
I wondered if there was a, maybe we could look at the fa- the the invitingness of our zoning on stuff like that, that maybe maybe we're a little less inviting in the future.
And the conditional use permit that forces them to have some kind of security on their own?
Yeah, it it, but but the problem is, is it comes back to the same thing, is that the the agencies that govern them don't allow them to do the things to be able to put those type of security measures in place.
Won't let them do it?
They won't let them do it. So for example.
They won't let them have a security guard on site.
Not there, they can't do anything. They've got people there and they they can, they have certain restraints where they can wrap them up and hold them, but they can't, they can't do anything to prevent them from running away. If they want to run away, they can run away. They can't put a lock on their window. They can't, you know, there's there's so many restrictions and regulations regulating how they deal with those kids, but they're pretty well hamstrung. And so their only uh recourse is to call us and let us be the parent. We're the ones dealing with them.
And I met with the school district recently, the S C A at Cedar High. One of the problems that they're facing is what, so so all of these programs are supposed to have a built-in education. You know, they have built-in schools, but when when, and I don't know exactly what triggers it, but when these kids are not manageable at their schools, by law, the S C A has to take them. And so we've got these kids being kind of dumped into the Iron County School District, which forces, whi- which doesn't allow other kids, you know, our our own kids that need those services. It kind of forces them out. Um and so that was, there were, I just had a meeting, it's been a couple of months ago, but that was the concern to see what we could do about it. And I'm like, I don't know that we can do anything about it, except, you know, maybe, I mean, we obviously need to figure out some legislation. But that was, you know, whatever that was, that was due to some new legislation just in the last couple of years that's kind of caused the problem. So I mean, there, the problem is is, well, there's there are several legislators that own these programs or or have or invested into programs. These are huge moneymakers, so they've got a pretty loud voice in the legislature with legislators that own group homes.
So I I don't know if part of the problem is with Doppel as far as their licensing or how to pull their licenses, if it gets to be uh that burdensome or, you know, exactly what the answer is, but right now it's not working.
I'm assuming this is a statewide issue, it's not just Iron County. Or is there a higher concentration?
I think Iron County has a bigger concentration.
Too.
Than most of the state.
I think that that a lot of these group homes have found that Iron County has been uh more receptive to it than other counties. And so we've ended up with a lot more of them than other areas of the state. So it's, I think it's concentrated here over other areas of the state.
I think the ones that we traditionally saw in Cedar City or whatever have migrated out into the county. Um they've been able to expand. I mean, for what group, I mean, I, there was one particular group that I know, you know, we used to deal with a lot and they had like ten to twelve girls in there and I, I mean, they got like thirty or, I mean, a ridiculous amount now that but they've moved out in the county where they can spread out. But I, you know, in in Perron, I worked nights in Perron and it's, I mean, we, it's kind of a joke of, oh, they're going to Discovery Ranch again, they're going to uh.
They say.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's every night. And on the flip side, you know, my wife's the the provider in Work Med. She's like, I have patient, she's like, I'm dealing with staff every day that got beat up, got bit, got clawed, got scratched. She's like, it's every day. Because I'll text her, I'm like, hey, there's another assault at Discovery Ranch. And she's like, well, I'll just make sure that's, that'll be on the calendar for tomorrow. But I mean, it's affecting, you know, not only Sheriff's Department, but it's it's affecting medical, it's affecting our school district. It's it's really a toll on our community.
I wonder if we could go to legislature and do a fee per fee per service type thing, you know, for these group homes?
Yeah, and yeah, and I I don't know, but I I think that part of the problem is is uh D C F S's role in these group homes at the state level, not here at the local level, but at the state level. You know, or they just, you know, when I've talked with the management of these group homes, they're they're frustrated. But they don't know what to do either because they're being told by state agencies how they have to treat these kids, what they can and can't do with these kids. And and so basically, the kids are running the houses, not the staff.
Again, these these places are making a lot of money.
A lot of money.
They ought to be paying their share. They shouldn't, that that burden shouldn't be placed on our other taxpayers.
So, but it's a problem and it's a growing problem. So. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Dennis? Dennis Johnson with her T V.
Morning, everybody. Hope everything's going well.
Morning, Dennis.
It's always better to follow the sheriff than to have him following me. Anyway, I'm Dennis Johnson. I do the county television systems. I think I know everybody here pretty well with the exception of Commissioner Robinson. I'll get to know you better too. To let you know some of the things that we're dealing with right now. I mean, the summer and the heat brings the air conditioning problems and power outages. Uh trying to finish up uh air conditioning project out at Burl right now, uh which I think we'll have done. Few issues that have been going on, I've been sending a few texts to Commissioner Cousins just to let him know of a repack issue. We've we've been through this before. The government decides we need to use this part of the spectrum for a different purpose. And uh right now, we've got some armed forces that want to take over some two-gig spectrum that we use to deliver microwave television from Salt Lake to our system. And that's kind of a double-edged sword. If it if it works out, typically, they replace that equipment and you can get upgraded equipment to operate in a different part of the spectrum, which is nice and keeps our system a little more modernized. If they don't do that, it just becomes an expense. So we'll see how that goes. Been dealing with the proposals to change television format for a few years. And I keep a close eye on that to see how it really is gonna play out. What they're doing is proposing to change the format to what they call A T S C three point O, which is capable of delivering four K quality television to to people's homes. I mean, it's it's beautiful. If you watch your DVDs, you see the difference between your DVDs and your Blu-rays and and you go from Blu-ray to four K and it's it's a step up even farther. It's getting to the point where you can't tell the difference because you can't see it with your eyes. I mean, you've put that on an eighty-inch screen and it's still picture perfect. But uh anyway, there are proposals with the F C C to require all broadcasters to change to that format within five years. And there are also comments to the F C C telling them not to make that a requirement or mandatory because it is a big expense. Uh I I see both sides. I I remember when they changed from analog television to digital, I wasn't a real supporter. But the digital systems have been so much better and provide so much better service and higher quality. Again, I'm back with the three dot O, I'm not sure that it's worth the expense. But we're monitoring it, we're testing our equipment to see what's capa- compatible, what's not. So we have a handle on it and and we know what the future's bringing. Few other issues that I've had calls about, maybe you've had a few. K C S G is fairly popular station. It transmits a lot of old older television programs that we we used to watch when we were kids. Anyway, they've, their system's tiling a lot. It it is not in our system, it's something that's within K C S G's system. I I've got a few calls. Anyway, uh I'm talking with them, they're working to improve it. They deliver that signal from Chicago through the internet to the transmitter side in Cedar City and then we distribute it beyond Cedar City. So that one's having a few struggles. There's a K M T I thing that's kind of the same thing. It's something we applied for licenses to keep spectrum available for when we wanted to test A T S C three dot O. And I'm working with them too, to try to make that more reliable. It's not as popular, but some people do watch it. Those are some of the things that are going on.
About the potential interference problem we were maybe anticipating with that new building they built up by our system.
That has not been the problem that I expected it to be. They're not easy to talk with. You know, they won't make it clear to you exactly what they're doing or what to expect.
Refresh my memory. Was that a radio station?
It was a radio station, a full power radio station that was put on one of our sites. And they've used an antenna system that focuses the signal over the top of our equipment rather than saturating the buildings and the ground around us, which is working well so far. I still use radiation monitor when I go up there to see what's happening today because it has the potential to be a radiation issue to people standing on the site. I was pretty disappointed with the BLM for even allowing that service to be with our low power equipment. I mean, there's our television equipment, there's FM repeaters up there, there's two way repeaters for the ambulance and for the county road that, that was a potential impact to all of those. But it is what it is and so far it's working. I still wouldn't want to see it done again. So, anyway. Any questions? Suggestions for improvement?
So you say you receive some of your signals through the internet. Are you do, are you receiving those wirelessly to your station and then broadcasting it? Is it, you don't have internet run up to those, do you?
We use very limited internet. We, Iron County doesn't receive anything by internet. KCSG receives it to their transmitter at Cedar City. And that's where the tiling issues are. And then we pick up some of that and distribute it through the rest of the county. We rebroadcast it down at Canaraville, out at Burl, over here west of Parowan. But those internet issues belong to KCSG. They're, they're not ours. But it still shows up on our equipment because our equipment rebroadcasts what it receives. So KMTI is quite similar. That one's not as big a deal. There's not as many people that watch it. It was reserving spectrum for us for other uses.
I, I honestly don't hardly get any complaints. So you're doing a good job.
That's the way I. Out of sight, out of mind.
So we appreciate you.
Anyway. Anything I can do for you? Okay. Good to see you all.
Oh, thank you, Dennis.
Commissioner Robinson?
So I missed the last meeting, but it's been, I've been everywhere in the last three weeks. One of the main issues that I've been working on is the, last time I, I was here, we talked about the wildlife management area out here in the Parowan Valley where they have the prairie dogs encroaching on farm ground. And we were able to get the vision wildlife down there and start trapping. And I have not gotten an update from them as to how many they've trapped, but it's, they're doing very well. But just a quick estimate, about $30,000 worth of damage that they've caused before we started trapping, before they started trapping, I should say, but they put up a fence and started going on that. So that's a, that'll continue throughout the year, it sounds like, until they get those numbers under control. The, the original count was there were supposed to be zero on the old Leon Robinson farm, the Haldeman's Now Farm. And there were several hundred. And on the Adams Farm, the original count was supposed to be seven. And there were several hundred there also, but. Had good meetings with the fair board and, and the, um, the new plan there. So that's looking very, very good. And, and really exciting opportunities there and what that's going to look like and, and the opportunities that's going to provide for the fair and for events throughout the year. So that's, that's really exciting. Attended the meeting at the, at the jail that they had about all the doors and the windows and how everything in that went. It was, I don't know if they finished that up in the day or not, did they?
Day and a half.
Day and a half. So I, I started that meeting with them and then came back for lunch and they're talking about the swings and everything on several thousand doors, you know, so it, it's quite extensive and monotonous to say the least. Those meetings are going well and, and things are moving along nicely with that. Let's see, we, we had a meeting that we were all involved in with the hiring of the new county planner. Those interviews went well and we're working through that. Those are the highlights.
I've been, I've been involved with the briefings on the Forsyth fire. We've, I've been, I've attended a couple of those briefings in person and then I get, get the updates. But, you know, there's been a lot of work put into that by George, our emergency manager has been really involved. Sheriff Carpenter as well, Chief Allred from Canara Fire Department. The, the worry is there's a little, there's a finger that fire on the eastern side that could move into the, to the Harmony Meadows Estates, whatever it's called. It's Heights? Harmony, whatever. Those, Harmony Heights? Uh, I'm not sure where, that became more of a concern the last week, but I, I haven't heard. Anyway. I was able to attend the Fire Chiefs quarterly meeting. That's always a good meeting. This time it was held in Bryanhead. Thank you for their hospitality. That moves around quarterly, but it's really good coordination. Spencer's involved in that meeting, representatives from all of our local fire departments, our federal partners. It's just, Sheriff's there, George is there. It's, it's just a, it really builds those relationships. I've actually had a couple of America 250 committee meetings. Maria said you're on the, told me I had to be on the committee and so therefore I just do what Maria says. But a couple of updates there. So we talked about this flag that we found in the basement of the courthouse. Part of that committee is actually the SEU Special Collections who works on, on, uh, what's the word? Preserving those type of things. So I actually talked to them. I actually brought the flag to our last meeting. They reached back and said that they've been able to authenticate the flag. They've able to, they've been able to authenticate the flag to the USS Iron County. They've been able to authenticate the person that the flag was donated by. And they're working on reaching out to some family members and getting some personal history, things like that on the flag. So, yeah, they, they were really excited. They said, oh, we can do all this, this, this and this. I'm like, oh, awesome. You, yeah, they're really excited about that project. So they're working on that to, to put together some things for us on that. We all met the other day. If you'd noticed, the, the park in Cedar City has bunting, red, white and blue bunting around all the fence. We, we spent a couple of days. We, we put bunting up until we ran out and ordered more bunting. And then actually, uh, my daughter and I, the other morning went, we didn't have anything going. We went and grabbed all the bunting and finished that little project in time for the July jamboree. So it looked very nice. So. The opportunity to attend the BZI Innovation Park ribbon cutting was actually, I was one of the speakers for that event. You know, the, that's just an event. I mean, that's a, the project that's going to revolutionize the county and it was really cool to be able to take part in that event. Attended my big chamber board meeting. That board is becoming more and more active and moving towards financial independence. It's, it's really turned into a good thing. I was able to attend the annual first responder luncheon. Like to thank the home builders, the Board of Realtors and the Chamber of Commerce that put that on each year. It's, it's in the park. It worked out really well. My daughter and I were putting up the bunting when the, got finished about the time that the, that the luncheon started. But that's a, it's a good place to rub shoulders. Kind of hung out with the sheriff and Chuck from the Veterans, Veterans Association and George. It's interesting to put George and Chuck in the same room at the same table to, you know, it was kind of like outdoing each other with Vietnam stories, which it was, it was pretty entertaining. Just on, an update on the fire district. We have a, there's folks from the, the company coming to do a face to face on July 28th and 29th with all the fire chiefs and everybody involved. George is coordinating those meetings, is going to tote those folks around to, especially to, to get with Vern and Vernon and, and folks in the West Desert. It's a little harder to catch them. These guys kind of wanted to line up meetings, you know, 45 minute meetings with a 15 minute break. George is like, ah, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to go catch people on tractors. We're gonna have to catch people. You know, it's not going to be quite that easy, but he's got that worked out. Were able to get a regional emergency management grant for $22,500. It's going to integrate into ENIC because that's going to help with fire monitoring. And I, the last thing, I was appointed to the Executive Committee for the Southern Utah Economic Alliance. Those meetings are to begin shortly. So be more involved in, in the regional economic development. That's all I got.
Thank you. So Mike on that flag?
Yeah.
I told you how to build a frame for it if you want. And Jones Paint Glass said they'll, don't make glass.
Oh, cool.
So I don't know how big this flag is, but it's, is it big?
Four by eight.
Four by eight. Okay. So that'll be a heavy, heavy piece.
It's a big, yeah, it's a standard.
And you want to hang it in, in the courthouse?
Somewhere here. Yeah. I would think in the, you know, as, as part of our, uh, America 250. You know, we've talked about each, each area is not required, but encouraged to do some kind of celebration throughout the next year. And I thought that would be good for us. For, you know, one, one of our activities here in the county is to, if we could present that flag and kind of do a, a display and maybe get kind of the history, the, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out, but.
So, yeah. So Cousins Cabinets will donate the frame and then we'll, we'll get the glass from Jones and.
Nice. That'd be great. Yeah. As soon as we'll, we're going to figure out what the, uh, the, they're gonna, they're gonna, the SEU is going to tell us the best way to mount it when they, like, perfect.
Thanks. I may have mentioned this before, but we did hire a new AOG Director for five county. That's Beaver, Kane, Washington, Iron and Garfield Counties. And we hired Darren Bushman from, uh, he was a, commissioner from Payette for many years. He, he'd served as the most recent EMS director in the state of Utah for a couple of years. He's doing a fantastic job and, and I talk to him often. And, and if any of you in any departments or municipalities or, or county, uh, he's just a, a wealth of knowledge and, and has, has great, and I mentioned this before, but he's, he's well respected with the legislature and others in the state. So, uh, he's going to be a great resource for us. I worked on a letter with Cedar City been coordinating. Terry Palmer, our building official, needed a letter for the permit for the jail showing that we have water taken care of for the jail as well as sewer impact fees paid. And so I talked to Jonathan Stathus with Cedar City and he's going to work up a letter for that. Terry and Reed have been talking about this moderate income housing report. I sent an email to the legislate, legislators in our area as well as Speaker Schultz. He called me last week and, and he knew we were frustrated. I, I reached out to Cedar City, uh, the city manager as well as Don Boudreau, he emailed me back and, and they're frustrated with that report as well. Just so you're not, no, you're not alone, Reed.
Rob Dodson too.
Rob is frustrated as well. So they have to do it as well, ENIC. And I just told Speaker Schultz, it's a one size fits all. It really doesn't work for us. It's, it's expensive. It's an unfunded mandate. And he, he, he promised he would talk to their, their department that does that and maybe not be so strict about it because they reject, I guess they reject it. And it's just a, a real, real burden on our county. Anyway, so he, he gave me a number. I texted that to you, Reed and Terry, and, and he said they could be, lend some support. So we'll keep working through that. This last week I met with, uh, on Friday, I took two of the Cedar City Councilmen, Councilman Phillips and Councilman Cox on a field trip, uh, talking about this NR, NRCS project on Coal Creek. Um, and then that afternoon I took two more, uh, Councilman Riddle and Melling and went through it. I want to come down and, and just kind of talk about it for a minute about this project. It's a, it's about a, it's, it's, it's a project that NRCS has been looking at for a lot of years. It's just really expensive, but it's something we're going to have to do. And I'm getting, I'm actually pretty excited about the potential. In 2020-01, we had it was 21 that God decided to dump six inches of rain at Cedar Brakes and then eight inches at Yuri Creek, all in 24 hour period. And it came down really fast. And so, uh, this is a project that would, just to give you an idea, anybody that's been up Right Hand Canyon, when you go up the canyon and cross that bridge, that bridge is probably, what do you think, Leon? Is that 30 feet down? I mean, 25, 30 feet? And the water came over the top of that bridge, eight feet. That's the amount of water that came down that canyon and it, it literally changed the landscape up, up there. And that water came down and I'm not sure how many cubic feet per second. I think it was probably 2,500 maybe. And the problem is that Woodbury Split right there by the, uh, where Cedar City built the new pickleball courts, the bicentennial, right there is the Woodbury Split. That plugged. So about three in the morning, a lot of the water went, um, down the Stevensville Ditch and it, and it just couldn't handle the, the amount of water. A tree got lodged in a bridge and, and anyway, it flooded Flying Ellen, some other residences, some hayfields. And I think our county road department hauled about 3,000 loads of dirt out of that neighborhood. It was, it was extensive damage. Leon?
It also brought you about a million tons of big boulders.
Yes. Yes. Unbelievable amount. And they, and they've been harvesting some of those for the Riprap along Coal Creek. So, but, and then, and it washed out the road. It undermined the road going up. It, it was about to fall off the edge. And so Curtis DeMill was up there for about a month. I helped him some. We had a couple of trackles going and we took a lot of those boulders and basically built a mountain to support that road. And then Bruce and his crews went up and repaved and re, re chip, well, re chip sealed it. But it was, uh, it was a, it was a massive deal. But this, this project, so, and I'll come down and, and point this out a little bit, but I'll talk first that, at the Woodbury Split, it, it splits Coal Creek into 60/40. 60% goes north, 40% goes, goes towards Quichapaw. And the, the 60% ends up at Rush Lake, if it makes it that far. The Woodbury, the Woodbury Split, when it sends it down the Stevensville Ditch, that direction, it goes down, it goes down past the Schmidt pit, the Western Rock pit, around DeMill's gravel pit, and then on down Stevensville Ditch. And that ditch is really, uh, we really don't want to have more than 1,000 cubic feet per second go down that ditch. And so this NRCS project would, it would take the cooperation of Cedar City. And that's why I spent some time lobbying the council because it's going to come before them as an item on their agenda. But they're looking, John, I don't know if, I sent you a video. Can you play that or is that too much work? I just want to give a perspective of. So this video, if he can play it, is, it shows Western Rock, the size of that pit, and that's the pit that you fly over when you approach the airport from the north. You fly right over the Western Rock pit and the Cedar City pit, and there's a dam. You can see the blue, the two blue, uh, on the bottom of the screen, the bigger blue, the, the top one, they've got it drawn small, but it's every bit as big as the one on the bottom in reality. Um, but, uh, this video would show you the size of the Western Rock pit and the Cedar City pit is equally as big. Is that gonna be too, if it's too hard, John, don't worry about it.
Uh, it's just, uh, it's Facebook and I have never logged in on Facebook.
Oh, I don't, I didn't know how to send it otherwise. I could, don't-
You talk, I'll try to get it.
Let me go. Yeah, don't worry about it. Um, so, let's see, John, can you move that up? Okay, so, right here is the Woodbury Split. So there's the bicentennial field right here, uh, the, the new pickleball courts are right here. So that's the Woodbury Split. It splits the water coming this way to, up to Quichapaw and then more to Rush Lake. So the goal here is they would do some work on the Woodbury Split, or the problem with the Woodbury Split. And Mike was involved in cleaning that out when it was fogged, uh, flood. Um, what happens is there's a, if any of you ever seen that, there's a, there's a metal fin when they built that. And the water is not very high, and when the water gets high and churning, it doesn't know which way to go. And so it loses some of the velocity. So they're gonna actually pour a concrete wall to keep that velocity going through and then extend the walls out this way. So, because what happens is when the water comes out of the, out of the split, it opens up wide, loses the velocity, and those big boulders start just dropping and it just plugs up. And so they need to extend that velocity so it carries the boulders and material out so they can clean it out with the trackles. It happens. That's what, those are the couple of repairs they're gonna do on that split. And then, um, it'll come out right. This, this is the Schmidt pit right, let's see. This is the Schmidt pit right here. And the water district, we built a, an inlet, a flume and skates so we can measure it. But, uh, Phil Schmidt, back in the day, back in about two thousand seventeen, eighteen, cleaned this out, so it's quite large. And, uh, we actually, last year ran a H, twenty-four inch HDPE from this pit over to the pit that you see along Airport Road. It's quite a large pit, and they're actually gonna run another pipe. And then we've also got the county gravel pit. So the water comes into the Schmidt pit, it drops the sediment and then it overflows into the county pit and then overflows into this pit. We recharge a lot of water in this area. Um, and then along here, the distance between the Schmidt inlet and the, and the Jones diversion, this can be a little bit steep. The water runs fast. They wanna build some, uh, do some gabion baskets and waterfalls or concrete diversion, so it slows that water down, drops the sediment out. Cedar City harvests a lot of gravel in this area, so it'll slow the water down, drop the sediment more, give Cedar City more gravel and harvest. Uh, like I said, they'll, they'll redo, John, if you wanna drop that down a little bit. Uh, right here, the Jones diversion, you guys have probably seen that. This is a fire tanker base station. Uh, you've seen probably the farmers out there, uh, trying to move those boards by hand. It's really cumbersome. They're gonna replace that diversion, have basically a push button on your cell phone. You can control these, these gates. They're gonna, they're gonna have to remove this bridge at some point and make this channel wider. That's the UDOT bridge. It goes over the UDOT paint shop. And then when you get up here to this, this is the Cedar City pit. Western Rock has a, has a lease on that. They've been mining it for a lot of years. It looks like it's getting close to being mined out, but I think they've got at least another six or eight years on that lease. Uh, hopefully they're done mining, mining that out sooner. Um, there's a, there's a large pit there, then there's a, a dam between the, the Cedar City pit and the, and the Western Rock pit. And so Cedar City owns this, Western Rock owns this pit. And, and, uh, back in two thousand seventeen, we ran a pipe down this road. It's a thirty-three inch pipe to send water down to this, uh, pit to recharge and, um, in two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three, between the Schmidt, recharging this, we recharged about, about three billion gallons of water. And it brought the water table. So if you look at the graph, the water is going like this down. And then where we recharge that year, it came back up about twenty feet. So it's been, been really effective. Um, one of the bigger projects on this NRCS deal is they're gonna make a, some kind of concrete flume where you can push a button. It'll basically open up the side of the channel and let that water flow right down into the Cedar City pit. On those monsoon events, so, uh, they wanna, they wanna protect us against the fifty and Rich, you can fill in the gaps and bring us something. They wanna really protect us against a, uh, a hundred-year event, which is about thirty-seven hundred acre feet per second. And with the Stevensville Ditch, and if you divide that up, it's about, if you take the sixty-forty, if you take the thirty-seven hundred times sixty percent, it's about twenty-two hundred acre feet per second. And we only want a thousand, so let's say we have one of these big monsoon events and it comes down. Uh, go, go back up, John. Oh, yeah, there you go, sorry. So, so the hundred year is a thirty-seven hundred acre feet. And if you take sixty percent of that, I think it's, it's, um, I think it was twenty-two hundred acre feet. And so what we would do is they would open that, that, just open it up and it'd be solid concrete with gates. You just push a button and it would just dump the water right into that Cedar City pit. Uh, a lot of those monsoon events, the water's very dirty. It's coming from, uh, Cedar Brakes. It's got a lot of clay in it. Sometimes it's at least fifty percent solids. It'll drop the sediment out. The idea is to put a spillway between the two pits, the, the Western Rock pit and the Cedar City pit so that it drops the sediment on clean water western. And then someday in the future, maybe Mel Clark, we can work that deal to use his pit, which is just, you know, Daisy change in the north. And then DeMills have offered to let us use their pit when it's retired, uh, on down, DeMills is over here, uh, Mel Clark is here. So someday, and this is long, long term, but someday if, if these two private owners are willing, we could have a really, really big recharge. And the beautiful thing about this, it would, it would peel off, let's say we have a, a flash flood that comes down the canyon and if we do, we can actually just peel that off and just dump that excess water into this basin and just allow the thousand acre feet, uh, cubic feet per second going on the Cedar Hill pitch. Um, so that's, that's kind of the plan. Um, oh, here's a video, John, pull it up. Uh, this is, this is a video I took years ago. It just shows the, it, it shows the size of the Western Rock pit. We've put about a hundred loads of basalt in here to keep it stable. It's, it's amazing what water does and, uh, so this is the size of the Western pit. And we have in two thousand, right, uh, we had, they're up to this high right here. I think in two thousand twenty-one, and this is the dam between the two. That was the dam you saw between the Cedar City pit and the Western pit, and so it's, yeah, right there. So on this side is a, is a pit just about as big as this one. And so the water would come off of Coal Creek into this pit, and then we'd put a, a spillway between the two and tie them together, so. Um, that would prevent flooding. We're, we're nervous about the Stevensville Ditch in places where it's, 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 it's carrying so much sediment down towards the wastewater treatment plant that Cedar City owns, that it's, it, Rich said there's a fence down there that have four foot t-pulse and now all you can see is about that much of a white t-post on top. It's, it's, it's deposited about four feet of material down in that area. We wanna try to stop that. And, and it'll take some maintenance on the county's part to keep, keep, uh, Cedar City pit cleaned out. But I think long-term it's gonna be a really great addition. If we have a heavy, like in old, like in two thousand oh five, we had a huge amount of snow on the mountain and, and depending on how fast that came down, we were really nervous in this, this, in Cedar Valley. And this would give an opportunity to just open that up and just dump all that water in there and give us, and then we can spread around and on the, on the pit to give us a lot of volume. So that's kinda, Rich, have I missed anything?
Well, what we would do in, in the long-term is we would take a pit like this, for example, that receives the water and we divide it into three separate ponds, so that we have a settling pond, a settling pond and a clean water pond. And by creating a settling pond, a settling pond, be able to switch back and forth, it, it reduces our maintenance of silt and debris that would clear up in one pond, so we'd let that one begin to dry, so we could get to it in the next, and the other one would be the receiving settling pond. And then the larger portion would be the recharge basin afterward. Uh, the other thing is, as, as Commissioner Cousins mentioned, what we worry about is down, uh, down towards the, uh, uh, sewer plant down there is where the belt route's gonna pass through. It's about sixty-six hundred and what Commissioner said is, is you require there to be, uh, uh, four to five feet of silt. Well, imagine that we've got to bridge that. We've got to be able to let the water flow under the belt route. Well, that becomes really difficult if the flow path under our bridging system, because we're gonna have to have a bridge. We're gonna have to have some release to Rush Lake. From year to year, we have that. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, both those years, Rush Lake got water from both of it. So can you imagine having a bridge where under the bridge, the sediment continues to build underneath the bridge? That doesn't make a lot of sense. It becomes a, a nightmare. So we'd like to catch the, the sediment. Um, I don't know if you mentioned this, Commissioner, but we get an annual, um, like, like you said, fifty to seventy percent silt sometimes in the, uh, spring, in the, uh, monsoon waters. And what that, what that translates into is an annual, uh, amount of silt of eighty-eight thousand yards, which is eight thousand and, and, ten yard truckload. Where do you put ten thousand yards of, I mean, eighty-eight thousand yards of material? Well, that's a situation that has to be solved, but right now, um, we are mining it out at, at, at a certain percentage up, upstream, up near the airport, which, which instead of having that all through seven miles, we'd like to have it concentrated where we can work with it. And, uh, our plan shows that we would be able to take about, um, a third of that off in the channel before we get to the airport road. And the other two is what we hit up, hit in the pit on a regular basis. So, John, can you go back to the one that shows what the charge says?
I, I kinda went through-
Oh, you went all the way.
Yeah, I, I went through the gabion baskets and the-
No, no, I just, I was talking about this. These numbers, right. The flow map is based upon the number of days it flows. In twenty twenty-three, it flowed for almost sixty days. Typically, it, it, it flows forty-five days. So an extra fifteen days of, you know, three point one hundred CSF, that's cubic feet per second. You just start multiplying that out, it becomes a large number really quick.
We had so much water in the Western Rock pit, um, so, when was it? Was it, when was that? Was that, uh, twenty-three? We had so much water in that that that-
Yeah, so it was twenty twenty-three.
It got so saturated and they had equipment down on this side and it got so sad, we thought it was gonna break and flood that other pit and it would've been devastating for their equipment and, and a huge liability. And so we wanna balance those two so they can fill up together and, and, and hold. And, uh, but, but if someday in the long-term, when we can get all these gravel pits, and that's really all they're good for is the water and, I mean, they're, they're just not worth it. Other than, you know, fill them with, with, uh, trees and concrete junk. We, we don't wanna do that.
Where do you wanna be? Just go up just a little bit to that table again. I wanna point out, well, down at the bottom. So, right, right there, the bottom of the-
Yeah, a little bit down.
Right there.
Right there?
Yeah, for alternatives at store, it'll tune flood flows, both flood water and storage and sediment storage analysis. We're completing multiple storage scenarios we consider. So, you know, we want to attune, which means to pay off, of course, and rest being directed. But these are, these are pretty big numbers. So average annual sediment load that includes, I thought it was in there somewhere that it was eighty-eight thousand yards annually.
This is, I mean, this is about a twenty million dollar project. Um, the county's match would be, I think, about one point eight million dollars. And so it's something long-term that we need to do. I know that, uh, and, and Rich, I don't know what the timeframe. I know that we, it's, this whole plan is contingent upon Cedar City, uh, signing an MOU with the county to use this for that purpose after Western Rock threw it their lease, so.
All the-
Yes.
The city's approach to their problem is not much different than this.
Well, the Cedar City is responsible down to the Woodbury Split, and then after that is the county's responsibility. And so I-
Maybe the voice in the wind.
Mm-hmm.
And probably the oldest person here.
Mm-hmm.
But I sat on top of the lay hill, above the Maverick Hill where the Palmer bulldozer sits.
Uh-huh.
And I watched that flood come down from the Greens Lake that was forty-five, fifty feet high, completely bridged over that entire channel. And now I look out there and all I see is more and more houses and the CCC diversion is incapable of hanging in like that. I think people have just forgotten and kind of bite them.
Yep. Yeah, well, we've seen that in Texas and other places in the country where flooding's a major deal. But we're trying to be proactive and do what we can with some of these, you know, hundred-year storms and, and those kind of things, so. But that's, if anybody has a question, you can grab me after. Um, I think that's, uh, we've gone a little long. Let's, let's take a quick five-minute break and then, uh-
Which is a public hearing discussion, a possible approval for a zone change from residential half acre R one half and residential five acre R five to rural agriculture twenty acre RA twenty, approximately fifty-two point two-five acres located within the description listed in the agenda. And this is located to near thirty-two hundred north, twenty-six twenty-five west Cedar City. Applicant is La Grand Webster.
Well, we have a little confusion. Good morning Commissioners. There's, there's two versions of the agenda. The one that you had up earlier has another item on the agenda for ordinance two thousand six dash five or two thousand five, two twenty-five dash six, which is a different item than what you just announced. So if you see on there, there's this agenda that I'm prepared to talk about, and we've advertised for a public hearing, but it didn't get on the same agenda that was posted for the state notice website.
In our, so we, we had, we had tried to anticipate that with Reed, and one version of the agenda had it, but the one that made it to this public notice website did not.
Right.
So.
So what I would like to do is just introduce it. We'll repost and have it on for two weeks.
And that's number one?
That's the, that's the one that is for the ordinance two thousand.
One I just read?
Five, no, that's for a zone change, and that's on the agenda.
That's okay.
And that was posted.
It's number two.
And we can do that one.
It's number two on our screen.
On your screen. But the posted agenda and the one that people have that's printed doesn't have that, the two thousand five, twenty-five dash six ordinance on there.
So number two will have to be, we'll talk about it, but it'll have to be voted on in two weeks.
Well, it's number one actually on this agenda.
Number one.
The one for the ordinance is the one that we'll talk about.
Oh, I see, okay.
But we'll have to have it back on.
This is actually number two.
Yeah, so number two is the one you introduced for the zone change. That is published, that's number one on this agenda, and the one that's on the state notice website.
Should we handle that one first then?
So whichever one you want.
Just do that, since I've already read it, let's do number two.
Okay, let's do that. Will you put me back and I can go get that file? That's a different one. So give me just a second to pull that up. Thank you. This is a requested zone change that you'll recall is a cleanup of a zone change for the agricultural protection area that was approved contingent upon the property being rezoned. This is the Webster parcel of fifty-two point two-five acres made up of five different pieces of property. The total acreage is fifty-two point two-five, some of it is zoned R five and some of it zoned R one half. And as they had applied for their agricultural protection area, and it included another hundred and nineteen acre parcel that was zoned A, A twenty, excuse me, and it was recommended by the Agricultural Advisory Board and the Planning Commission to approve that agricultural protection area based on rezoning the properties here that are, let me just zoom in here a little bit, zoned R five and R one half. And so we have these five separate parcels. And the Planning Commission reviewed that at their meeting last week and recommended approval for the zone change so that it was in conformance with the previous recommendations of approving the agricultural protection area contingent upon the rezoning. Notifications have been done, public hearings have been done, everything has, is fine on this one, we can take action on that. And so we, we had done an applicant, a review of that previously, and I don't know if you have any questions about that. We talked quite a bit about it when we talked about the agricultural protection area. So we do have to have a public hearing based on that, but unless you have any other questions about what we're doing, I think we can have the zone, the public hearing.
Okay, so will Chair declares a public hearing open for, it's actually the gen item number two.
Zone change.
Zone change issue that I read. Is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and.
Do you have any questions?
No.
No. So we're rezoning fifty-two point two-five acres from R one half and R five to RA twenty, which is rural agricultural zone, which conforms with the requirements of the agricultural protection area, so that then your previous action would go into effect because it was done contingent upon this property being rezoned.
Yeah. All right. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. I'll move to approve zone change from residential one-half acre R one half and residential five acre R five to rural agriculture twenty acre RA twenty, approximately fifty-two point two-five acres located within the legal description as provided within the agenda. The property is currently zoned R one and R five located near thirty-two hundred north, twenty-six twenty-five west Cedar City.
Second motion, it's been moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Thanks Reed. And we need to.
So now this item is on some agendas, the one that you had posted up here, but it wasn't on the state notice website. We have advertised for it, it was on the planning commi, it was on the state notice website and the county website for this ordinance to be approved today, but not on the agenda for today that got posted to the state notice website. So just to make sure that there's not any concern, we'll put it back on, but since we had a public hearing scheduled and it was on the state notice website and we, I, I think, and part of this agenda, one of the agendas, we'll go ahead and discuss it, but we, we will not necessarily hold the public hearing today. We'll wait for two, two weeks and we'll advertise again and then we can go forward with it. I, I sent a copy of it over the weekend, and sorry for that late, because I'd made some changes to it from the Planning Commission. So let me just introduce briefly what it is and we can talk a little bit about it if you have any questions. There are three, three areas of change to the county ordinance that the Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve that we've been working on with staff on several items. The first is a reduction of setback in the commercial zoning district when we have a property that shares a common lot line with a road right-of-way or railroad right-of-way. So they don't have another property in behind them. We have several properties like this out along, out on Iron Springs Road, the Bowman's Country Kitchen was the one that brought this forward and said, hey, look, we, you've got plenty of room to get to the back of these buildings if we move the setback. Commercial property is, we got a narrow corridor there because of the railroad and Iron Springs Road, and we can take advantage of more there, and you still have access to it for fire and aesthetics and the setbacks and everything. And so as we looked at that with staff, we agreed that if there's a property in the commercial zoning district that has that situation, it makes sense to reduce that rear setback from twenty-five to ten feet because they still can, it's not impaired in any way. And we talked to the fire department about that, they agreed, and that's what Cedar City's setback is in commercial and even smaller, and you can reduce that even smaller in some cases because of building code. We felt ten feet would give them fifteen more feet of property to use and it wouldn't hurt us in any way. So that's the first change, is to reduce it in those two situations, when it's sharing a common rear lot line with a, with a railroad right-of-way or a public road right-of-way. The other amendment to the code relates to soil suitability and we, we, when we adopted the subdivision ordinance in two thousand, soils reports and geotechnical reports were not required for building permits. And so we wanted to get a good feel in the subdivision of what the soil situations were. Now, nowadays, we've run into a number of situations where we're requiring a soil suitability study for a subdivision that really doesn't help us in any way, and all it does is cost the developer and the landowner money because they're having to do a soil suitability study that costs a thousand, two thousand, three thousand, depending on how big the subdivision is. And then in the end, we come back and each lot has to get a soils report, again, a geotechnical report for their building permit, because where they dug the pit on the test site for the subdivision wasn't within a very close area to where they're going to build, and so it doesn't, it's not sufficient for the building permit. So they end up having to do another soils report. And we have subdivisions, for instance, like minor subdivisions and road dedication subdivisions, where we're not doing those improvements. It's already on a county road or it's already, there's no road required, no road improvement required. And so we don't need soil suitability for that because we're not making any public infrastructure, and now we're still requiring that. So what this does is it eliminates and, and gives greater flexibility. You can just kind of see the language there that a geotechnical report, and I can go down here and show that language a little bit better, may be simplified and tailored to evaluate only the specific areas of a proposed subdivision where public improvements are required. If a minor subdivision does not require certain public infrastructure, then we can waive that and it's deferred because we're going to get soil, geotechnical work done later when there's a further subdivision of the property or there's a building permit. So we, we just wanted to make that change, and it's been brought to our attention several times by developers of why we're doing this and why it's necessary, and we feel like it's a warrant, a warranted change to simplify the process and, and not require additional work and money that isn't required, isn't helpful. So we're doing that in two sections of the code, one for minor subdivisions, which is this section sixteen twenty oh seven oh, and the area of road dedication subdivisions, which is sixteen twenty-two oh six oh. Those are the two sections which will have this additional paragraph put in that allows for a reduction or a tailoring of that geotechnical report to only what's required. The third, the third change relates to interesting situation in, in state code and county code that has language that requires when a property is being sold, leased, prepared for division of any form, like a lease on a property, it's a subdivision by, by definition of the state code. And we've had a number of situations where a property owner wants to be able to lease portions of a building or portions of a lot where they may have a little office building and rent out a, a space and, and do that several times on a parcel without wanting to break the parcel up because they're still the owner of that parcel, they're just leasing it separately. The way the code read, prev, still reads and the thing that we're trying to, to simplify is that it would require a subdivision and, and that would divide the land. And this exemption, what we've written in code here, see if I can find the language, that's, it's just, just right there. Any person, organization, corporation, or other entity who leases, rents, or develops any portion of a building, legal lot or parcel to multiple tenants or leases may do so without creating a subdivision as defined in our code, section sixteen zero four, and that's the same language as the state code, if the lease or rental agreement clearly specifies that the area of the lot, parcel, or building rented or leased is a portion or a part of a single lot, single legal lot or parcel, and not an ownership division or subdivision of said building, lot, or parcel. So if, if it's clear that the intent is to remain as a single parcel and it's not a way around the subdivision by leasing and then breaking up the parcel and selling portions of the building and it's just leased, then it would be exempt from the subdivision requirements. And so again, it's a, an attempt to simplify and make it cleaner that people aren't breaking the law when they're leasing portions of a building or a lot.
But if, if an owner or subsequent owner later wanted to subdivide, they'd still just have to go through the regular process.
Absolutely, they could subdivide and break it up, but then they're required to, you know, have frontage on each lot and have water and sewer and all the things that a subdivision requires, which are not often the case with leasing spaces. And so that's why this provision isn't here. In our, in a, in a county code, we don't have any provision for condominiums, we don't have any of the language that sometimes is allowed by state law to get around some of those things that they call them ownership changes, but that's why we're saying if it's not an ownership change, and it's clear that it's going to remain in single ownership and a single parcel, then they're, they're not in foul of the subdivision law. And that's what this is for. So those are the three provision changes in this ordinance, at least introduce it today. We'll wait and have the public hearing on that. If there's any other discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval on that, and we'll just wait till two weeks and take further action unless there's further discussion or questions that you have.
No, that makes sense.
Nope. Thank you for indulging that and the, and the error that we had on, it was my fault, so we'll get it fixed in two weeks. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. We'll go ahead and go to number three, public comments. This time limit, three minute time limit per speaker for public participants, should not repeat other comments, and if it's an agenda item, hold off and, and discuss it when we discuss the agenda item, please. Seeing none, I thought Terry, you were coming up, but you were leaving.
I was going to say, what's he got to say? He's making me nervous.
Bringing a backpack and everything.
Freaking me out.
Really disappointed you. All right, let's go to number four, discussion presentation of two thousand twenty-four independent audit by Kimball and Roberts, certified public accountants. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. You've got quite a busy schedule today. Gone through a lot of information, it's been interesting. Rather than spend a lot of time going through each individual section, I'm just going to present the financial statement on how you can go through and find information in here. There's these, if you'll turn to the table of contents, on the second page, just outlines where you can find the basic information for these financials. We start out with the independent auditors' report, which I'll go through here in just a minute. And if you're to that table of contents there, then we have management's discuss, discussion and analysis, and this is a, a report that is done by management to compare this year to the prior year and explain any major differences. That's in the management's discussion and analysis. And it brings us to the basic financial statements, and in that we have the, the statement of net position, which shows all your assets and liabilities, and then the statement of activities, which shows the revenues and expenditures on a, on a full accrual basis. And down below that, we get to the fund financial statements. As they're listed there, you have balance sheets and income statements under the fund type, and then you also have reports on proprietary funds, which is sewer and water type entities. And, and they show down under their startup page twenty-one, they go down through page twenty-three. Then you have the fiduciary fund, which includes the money held by the treasurer year-end for these other taxing entities to be dispersed. Then it brings you to the notes to the financial statements. Let's explain, kind of expand on the balance sheet. And the required supplementary information is, and there is required supplementary information such as your budgets and also the schedule of revenues and expenditures and, and changes in fund balances, excuse me. Then we have also, turn the page, I think we have single audit this year, quite a bit of information in this report.
What page are you on?
Just turn the page over. It has combining financials. You have a lot of non-major funds that are shown in here, and then both, below that is the compliance section, which has our independent audit report on internal control, and then our independent audit report on the, each major federal program and internal control over that. Then there's a schedule of expenditures and federal awards included. So there's lots of information in here, and I don't want to take time to go through each individual one, but on page two, we give our opinion on these financial statements. We start out by saying we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Iron County, a government-owned unit as for, and for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty-four. And related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the county's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents. They'll go on and talk about these two component units that you have, how they, they don't issue separate audit reports, but they are included in your report. And the paragraph underneath that is our opinion. We say in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly, now I have to key on that, present fairly doesn't mean they're a hundred percent accurate, but within materiality scope, they are materially fairly presented in all material respects. The respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component unit, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of Iron County as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in United States of America. Didn't think I could do that with one breath. That's what makes no sense. But anyway, that, that is what's called an unmodified or clean opinion. So we, we didn't find any uncorrected material errors that were left without, without being corrected, that these financial statements after they were done were fairly presented in all material respect. So I'm going to turn a little time over to Gabe to go through a couple of our findings that we had, and then maybe to talk a little bit about one of the notes. Gabe?
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good. Well, as Rick said, we won't go through this whole thing. I know it's put you right to sleep, but we will hit a couple of major points. The first one I want you to turn to is in the notes, and this will kind of lead into to one of the findings, and I want to have you turn to page forty-three, we'll start Had a big bond this year, big one, really big. Biggest one of the nine counties we do, that we've seen in some time, but on page forty-three, you'll notice this is a summarized schedule of the county's long-term debt, and you'll see in the center of the page under revenue obligations, you'll see that sales tax revenue bond of eighty-seven five twenty. It had in incorporated with that a premium that is amortized over the time, over the life of the bond and a discount, and so those are reported as proper bond reporting in this particular case, that's, that's the factors associated with that bond. So that's kind of where it shows in the total debt as a whole, but we did add a, a little more detailed note on the debt itself on page forty-six. So if you flip over the page there, you'll see, describe the bond, the issue date, par value, and so on. And so that's, we felt that that was important to disclose there, to be a little more thorough. All of your bonds are disclosed subsequent to that. You'll see on the next page forty-seven, a list of the amortization schedule, which is the payment schedule, principal and interest on the bond. And so, yeah, there'll, there'll be a, a lot of payments for a long time, but it'll be a great facility. So that's, that's one new thing there, and that does lead into the compliance section. I wanted to kind of point that out where that is in the audit. Maybe one other thing is you flip back, the construction aspect of that is, is back a few pages, and it will show up on page forty as construction in progress and the governmental activities up at the top under land, you'll see the additions there, beginning balance two point three, additions eight point eight, with an ending balance at the end of the year of eleven point two. Now that can be all construction projects that are in place at the time, that's a, maybe a, a combined figure, but the bulk of that is that, that jail project, and that'll, that'll continue to accrue until it's completed, and once it's completed, it will drop down into the depreciation and, and begin depreciation, so.
So you're actually, you're actually tracking the value as it increases with the project?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so now that we've kind of pointed that out, I'll have you flip to the very back and we'll hit some of the compliance reports that were required to issue. Starts on page eighty-eight. So this, this report here is the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. We did have a couple of findings in this area. One, and, and where it's noted is down in the second to the last paragraph, we talk about a deficiency in internal control exists when a design or operation of the control does not allow the management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent or detect and correct misstatements on a timely basis. And we basically have two levels, you have a material weakness and you have a significant deficiency. Usually a significant deficiency is going to be warranted if it's, if it's substantial. And, and so we consider the deficiencies described in the accompanying schedule of findings and recommendations and I, as items two, twenty twenty-four dash one and twenty twenty-four dash two to be a significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting. So now I'm going to have you, we're going to reference, we reference it in that report. Other than that, we did not find any other material weaknesses, although they may exist, we didn't identify other, any others other than these two. So if you flip from there over to page one hundred and one oh one, this is the findings and the recommendations that we're referring to there. So the first one is the bond-related transactions were not recorded in the general ledger. Basically during the review, we look in the financial statements, and what we had found was that there was a bond recorded in your general long-term debt fund, which is an informational place, so it was recorded, but the bond itself as a revenue or incomes coming in and the related PTIF cash deposit and the earnings on that deposit, in addition to the bond costs and the amortized premiums that are required, it, it wasn't, none of that was in the statement. So essentially your cash was understated, interest investment earnings was understated, the, the, the technical revenue and, because governmental funds, it's, it's considered revenue when it comes in, and so none of that was disclosed. So we, we spoke with Luke, we went through the required entries. He agreed based on the, the, the required entries that are, that Ghasby requires, and so those entries were made, and so once they're made, those are now reflected in these statements, and now the statements are fine. The, the lack of internal control is just that, in fact, our, our, our recommendation is that we recommend the county implement procedures to ensure that all debt issuances or related financial transactions are proper, promptly and accurately recorded in the general ledger. Communication between finance, legal counsel, and third-party financial advisors should be improved to ensure proper reporting of bond transactions. So again, it was, it was in there, but it, but it kind of wasn't, if that makes sense. So everybody was aware of it, but in terms of us having a complete and representative statement, it, it needed to be included. So anytime those things happen, and this is not uncommon practice, but if, if those kinds of large transactions, especially bonding, there's a lot of components that can go along with it, it's good to maybe reach out to third parties and just make sure that, that those entries are there. The other finding that we had was an overstatement on the capital asset due to entry error, and this is where we had identified, and essentially what it was, was a typo, but it was a, quite a large typo. It had like an eighty thousand dollar asset, when we looked at the invoice, had been recorded in this depreciation schedule as an eight hundred thousand dollar asset. So that can, you know, throw things off. It was a simple mis, misstep, but the, the internal control issue there is that there's a, a, a step where, where there should be another check, you know, with the invoice, make sure somebody's entering in and, and Luke checking it, but maybe checking it against the invoice, not just against the entry. So just an improve in internal control there to make sure the accuracy of those inputs are there, especially on those larger, or, or on the assets. And, and assets are, nobody likes assets, they are a pain. I deal with them everywhere I go, so I can concur. They're not fun. You got to keep track of them, and, and it's not always fun, and those things can happen. So anyway, we recommended that implement a review and approval process for capital asset entries, particularly those manually entered. Supporting documentation for capital asset acquisitions should be cross-verified by a second reviewer before posting to the accounting system, so. And our, their response is there, as we got them from Luke, was that, you know, those, obviously the entries were made, the corrections were made, and, and the statements are great. So that's, those are two findings that we had. Now, next year, when the audit is, is presented, if there is, obviously there, there's not going to be another eighty-seven million dollar bond, so that finding will be resolved and be reflected in that, that audit report next year, as will the capital asset, assuming that when we test assets, we don't find any irregularities, then that will come off. So that's how that works. There'll be a rec, a removal of the finding. Other than that, the, the last two reports I'll just hit on briefly is the pages ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five. So basically, this is your single audit, ninety-three, ninety-five. This is where you, with any federal money that you receive, over a million, we have to go in and do a program selection, there's a process for that, identify the programs to be tested, look at the compliance requirements and how those monies are spent, and determine if you were, were in compliance with that. And so second paragraph on page ninety says, in our opinion, the county. And so second paragraph on page ninety says, in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct or material effect on each of the major federal programs for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. So we had a clean, single audit. Flipping over to pages ninety four and ninety five, you'll notice that the, this is the federal monies expended for the year, and the program that was selected for testing was the watershed program and flood prevention at one point one four million, which was more than half of the total direct federal assistance and and actually about half of the total assistance. So so we had a pretty good sample base of that program and and had no irregularities or findings there. So single audit was great. The last one is pages ninety seven and ninety eight. This is the state compliance. This is the gotcha for everybody that we do most every time, and you had a very clean report. There were no findings here. In fact, in the in the top of page ninety eight, we say, in our opinion, Iron County complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on the county for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. So no state compliance findings. And with that, unless there are any questions or anything specific you'd like us to address in the audit, we will leave you to the rest of your meeting.
Now, we appreciate the time that you take with us, and I mean, it's, I don't know, we have no, at least I have no concerns about the audit. It's always very thorough every year.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity.
The communication with you guys is great, you know. Thank you.
We missed Paul this time. I think he was out of the, out of the, out of the area or somewhere on. Hopefully, it was fun. Funnier than than being in the, I know when the auditors come, that's the best time to plan the vacation.
That's the funnest part of our year.
No, but commend your staff. You know, Luke does a great job. He's very proactive in the departments, too, which is is not always something that we see in terms of, you know, internally auditing from the auditor's office, which is one of their function responsibilities. So he does a great job, and and Nicole does a great job in the treasurer's office, accounting for the cash and and reconciling, and it makes it makes the audit go really smooth. So we appreciate them and appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for the good work. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Let's go to number five, discussion on possible approval of accepting VOKA, Victims of Crime Act and UVSP, Utah Victim Services Programs grant for the two thousand twenty five twenty seven grant cycle. Jaden?
Morning. We have received preliminary awards for our grants for the victim services program with the sheriff's office. VOKA, we are expected to receive a total of ninety thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty five cents over the next two years. That's a decrease from our last award where we had a hundred and eighteen thousand. We're going to kind of continually see that decrease as those crime victim funds deplete and as we kind of get it more solidified in our local government stuff. That roughly averages out to about forty five thousand a year. Those funds with VOKA cover a partial cost of salary and benefits for Savannah, who is our advocate that's based out of CCPD full time. Cedar City also contributes to her salary and benefits, just about twenty, under twenty thousand dollars. So they're kind of slowly moving that into their budget so they can present that to their city council in the near future. It'll cover our program supplies, emergency funding that addresses immediate needs of crime victims. The grant conditions and certified assurances are on the Utah Office for Victims of Crime website, and so those can be reviewed. We've always been in compliance with all of those. We do have to sign those every year at the start of each grant cycle. We've put Mike Blake as our authorized official just because that's kind of who historically has signed those grants. So those will be coming through there. And the second grant that we have for our program is the UVSP, Utah Victim Services Program. That is the state grant. When Utah started seeing federal government money going down, they decided to step in and start reserving money for victim services across the state. And so we will receive a hundred and fifty thousand over the two years, seventy five thousand per year. That grant will help cover a partial cost and salary and benefits for the program manager, which is me, as well as the supplies and training for whatever I need for our program. So both of those grants began July first, they'll end June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty seven. We haven't, as of this morning, we haven't received the actual award package. That should be coming probably in the next couple of weeks. Mike, I told our grant analyst to shoot me a message when they email that, and I'll send you a text when they do. So with your approval, we'll move forward with that. Do you guys have any questions about the grants?
What was that total again? So we can.
VOKA was ninety thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty five cents for the two years, and then the UVSP was a hundred and fifty thousand total.
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the VOKA and UVSP grants for the two thousand twenty five to two thousand twenty seven grant cycle.
John, you want us to list the amounts for the record?
Yeah. So the.
So the VOKA amount is ninety thousand.
Six hundred and twelve and fifty five.
Six hundred and twelve.
Cents, yeah.
And.
Fifty five cents.
And fifty five cents, and the Utah Victim Service Program was one hundred and fifty thousand even for two year, two year program.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jaden.
Thanks, Jaden.
Number six, review and possible approval of the results of the two thousand twenty five May tax sale. August?
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our May tax sale was held the fourth Thursday in May, as always, so May twenty second of twenty five this year. It was our smallest, I believe. We only had fifty nine properties that actually went to sell. We sold them all with a total of four hundred and fifty, or four hundred and fifty four thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars and thirty seven cents. Of that, the county collected sixty six thousand, eight hundred and ninety two dollars and ninety five cents. Forty one thousand, three hundred and seventy two ninety five was back taxes. And the difference of the twenty five five twenty was the fees for recording and admin. So, I mean, it went really good. The public surplus conducted it for us, and everything went smoothly. It was done by three. We didn't retain anything, which is great for us. So if you're approved, then we're done.
Okay.
Cool.
We'll entertain a motion to approve it.
We'll prove, hold on, I was looking at the wrong one. Approve the results of the two thousand twenty five May tax sale.
Second that motion. It moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, August.
Do all three of us sign it?
Yeah, I think we do on this one.
August, do do all three commissioners sign?
Yeah.
She she gone.
Let's see. Number seven, discussion on possible approval to update the fee schedule for public infrastructure district fees. Lucas?
Can I go to you then? Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So just probably a month or two ago, we did review and update the entire fee schedule and get that approved. There were a few things we were still looking at that weren't finalized with public infrastructure districts. So we have had quite a few of these record in the county. And what this is, is so it's basically a new taxing entity, kind of like a water conservancy district or even a city. So it's its own taxing entity within a certain area. Most of these are like newer subdivisions. They are creating this property tax levy that is mainly used for like infrastructure in that new subdivision. So we've had probably, I don't know, eight or nine of these record in our county already. This year, we do have one of them that is issuing a levy. So it's the very first one. The problem with these, they do create a lot of administrative work. So it starts in the assessors' off or in the recorder's office, they will get that recorded. It then comes to my office. We have to create a new authority within our tax software, a few other things, and then it goes to the treasurer's office where they also create it and get it set up on their end to where they can withhold those funds for that entity and then set it up to where they can send those payments to that new taxing entity. And then any one that is within the county, so not, most of the ones we've had are within Cedar City, so that those will go to Cedar City, they'll approve them, but we will have some that will come through the county. We haven't had any of those yet, but we wanted to have two separate fees. Cedar City kind of does it the same way. Their fee is very similar to Willa County as well. So the two thousand dollar application fee, so when someone brings in, say they're going to do a new subdivision out in the county, and they want to create one of these PIDs, they will go to John's office, turn in the application. We did an ordinance on PIDs, which describes what all needs to be included in the application. We have this two thousand dollar fee for that initial application. And then the second administrative fee is due for any PID, even if it's in Cedar City, you know, whatever municipality it's in, there will be this five thousand dollar fee. And that is just for all of the administrative oversight and setup that we do on our part. And then the ongoing, I mean, these will last forever until they're dissolved. Most of them will have bonds for thirty, forty years, so we'll be collecting taxes, setting tax rates every year, you know, working with those entities over the next however many years. So we have that five thousand dollar fee for any one that is approved before it's recorded, we'll collect that fee. John and Nicole have also been involved with this and Carrie as well. I don't know if they want to add any insight.
We've heard this is Nicole's favorite thing.
John? I know. I'm like, man, we should be charging like twenty thousand.
It's actually a real concern. There's a lot of value, a lot of expense that will be incurred over the life of a PID. But one of the things that we're trying to clarify is how those fees will be collected if it's done with another entity. But right now, we've set the amount at five thousand, whether that be paid directly by the developer or through the entity, whether it be Cedar City or Enoch or, you know, the in the port. And actually, we're meeting with Danny Stewart later today to kind of work out some of that. So.
Yeah, we want to reach out to all the cities, just let them know of this fee. And once they pay Cedar, like their fee, they could just pay our part of the fee to Cedar City as well and have them send it over to us or have them pay us separate. But John and I are, we'll reach out to the cities and kind of let them know, let them know where we're at, what our fee is, just so they have it when someone brings in an application, they can let them know about our side of it as well.
Part of the reason for doing it this way is actually in the ordinance for the PIDs. It would, it says the fee shall be for the Iron County fee structure, which allows these fees to be adjusted if needed without having to redo the ordinance. So I thought there was some wisdom there.
That makes it a lot easier.
So I just, my only comment is, I I wish we could get some information out to the public. The one we started collecting this year, the legislature will allow up to fifteen mils. Now, a lot of people, I don't think people understand when you say fifteen mils, and they're approving them at Cedar City for six mils. And I think, oh, that doesn't sound bad. But Cedar City's overall rate last year was point zero seven. Well, a six mil is point zero six. That is going to double people's property tax. So I just, I think they don't understand that. They think, oh, six mils, that doesn't sound bad. Well, that's doubling. So Shirts Canyon, two will start next year with six mils, doubling their taxes. Same thing for the Chelsea this year, six, six mils. So so I hope they never let them go up to fifteen because that would.
Yeah. Triple. Triple. I did, yeah, we did look at one for the average home value this year was like four hundred and thirty nine thousand in Iron County. And Cedar City's tax rate, I think the taxes would have been around fifteen hundred dollars, and with this, it would have raised it to like twenty six hundred dollars. So.
And you know, there are bigger principles in play, you know, PIDs probably have a place for some development, but but really, you're saying, you're saying, I'm the developer, I want to develop this, and through tax money, we're going to, you know, levy people for many years to help pay for the the infrastructure for this project. And and I think that would make sense if we were desperate for development. We are the opposite of desperate for development. So it's it's an interesting paradigm because it's this tool to jumpstart development, but we're drowning in development. So it's, I have my opinions, but.
And that's the thing, I mean, people buying property just so the public's aware, you can look and see if your property is in one of these areas that has a PID, so you know how that's going to affect your property taxes, because across the street, there may be another lot that's not in the PID, you know? So so people are aware, but.
Yeah. We're just grateful that you and Nicole count the beans.
Yeah, it's, and these are, like I said, these are new, so it's like, it's our first one this year, and we've had a lot of other ones, so we're kind of trying to get a hang of all of it.
Looks complicated.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the update to the fee schedule for the public infrastructure district fees.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lucas. Thanks, Nicole. Hang in there. All right. Number eight, discussion on possible approval of a right of way and easement grant with Questar Gas Company, doing business as Enbridge Gas, Utah. Rich?
Good morning, commissioners. Normally, we issue these encroachment permits as as a standard course of business in the engineering department. This one was different. This one was interesting. They are looking for a an easement granted described, and we're just bringing it up here now. So I wanted it to come to be to the commissioners for their input and thoughts. This is to the north, or the top of the page is fifty six. The Westview Drive is the one dropping. And and where the county owns is, several years ago, we acquired the hatched area as as part of the Quichapah Channel. So it is in the channel. They want to cross from one side of the channel to the other. They are going to bury it twenty seven feet deep. They're going to steel line it. It is a high pressure gas line. The the challenges here is, you remember when we were in Paragona?
Twenty seven feet deep from the bottom of the channel or the?
From the bottom of the channel.
That's good.
It's going to be nice and deep. The problem I wanted to bring and address was, remember a couple of years ago, we were in Paragona, along that Main Street there in the UDOT right away on Old Ninety One?
Yep.
And we needed to have room to put a coal, a a barrow ditch in.
Right. No room.
They came out, we came out, you and I were there, several other interested partners, parties in Paragona. And in order for us to work that, do you remember the amount they wanted to charge UDOT to move that high pressure gas line? Four million dollars.
It was steep.
And so I don't know if we want to just automatically approve something like this where once we, I don't know how to say this, but once we give these easements to these large utility companies, I feel like we're at the mercy of the utility company. They won't let us do anything that that might be to our advantage unless we write the easement in a way that says the county retains control and you can't dictate movement and things like that. Right now, they're looking for a straight easement. I sent this to you, didn't I, Sam?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. So I want your input.
Well.
What do we want to do?
Twenty seven feet's deep.
Yes.
Can't imagine we would ever knock on wood.
Well, it was one of the questions I asked. I said, hey, you know, we get erosion and stuff like that. How is this high pressure gas line going there, going to be outside of any erosion? Now, twenty seven feet right there at the beginning would be a catastro, catastrophic. You know, we we would have had, fifty six would be gone. There would be a chasm there or a washer there. So maybe we don't need something, maybe we do. That's all I'm asking. Because like I said, normally, the engineering depart, our office gives encroachment permits, but they. Because like I said, normally the engineering depart, our office uh, uh, gives encroachment permits, but they have limited scope. This is in fact a legal easement in perpetuity.
What do you think, Sam?
Yeah, that's it.
I, I think if you were to press on those uh stipulations that we have control and we're going to tell you how we want it and when we want to work it. Um, they would be disincentivized to run it through our easement right there anyway. Um, so the simplest thing may be just to say no.
Find another solution?
Yeah, um, or um, dare I say, consider going even deeper? I mean.
Is this to serve, what's this high line, pressure line for? Is it to serve?
Didn't disclose where they were going. It's probably just running fifty-six out to um. Iron Springs, it could go, just keep going. It's a high-pressure gas line. Yeah, and Sam, I, you know, I, I don't have a crystal ball either. We can simply say no, maybe they don't have another option. Uh, it is in alignment.
I mean, twenty-seven feet is probably about from that wall to where Sam's sitting, close, maybe about that.
Below the current channel, which is about.
I can't imagine.
What's their current pipe at?
They don't have one, that's why they're asking.
Okay, okay.
And really, this is, if it were a power line, this would be a transmission line. It, we're talking a pretty major.
Yeah.
Yeah. And where you're dealing with something like water, though, and like the unpredictability of erosion.
Right.
No way to guarantee that we won't get that deep.
Is there any clarification?
Event, like you said, but.
Is there any clarification as to who is at peril if there is a failure? I mean, it's.
They, they, them, they are going to protect it. In fact, after they, it's going to be steel pipe. They're gonna use steel and they're gonna encase it. I asked about, I forgot, I'd also asked if it was going to be uh concrete encased.
But if the commission isn't committed to a particular course of action, I'd be inclined to just have us reach out to them and express our concerns and. Uh, come back with some other options potentially out, you know, say, we're not really inclined to give the easement because of our concerns and this type of area. Um, how would you hope to protect against it? How can you ensure the county?
Right.
Going to incur a bunch of money if we need to work in that easement.
They must have the easement, easements acquired on both sides of it, right?
Yeah, those are city, Cedar City.
And they've approved it?
I haven't reached out to them.
I was gonna say, we could talk to Cedar as well and see if they've considered that, so.
I would.
Or either they're Cedar City or they're UDOT.
I would say we table this and maybe get a, a UDOT, or I mean, not UDOT, but uh. West Star, Enbridge representative here and to talk about it. But so you're talking they would do steel and encase it in concrete, so there's, in twenty-seven feet deep, I, I can't imagine.
Like I said, that would be catastrophic failure across fifty-six to have. To, to.
Maybe a non-issue.
Even floodwaters, I can't imagine. It would never get that deep.
No, it's going to wash out, um.
It would, I mean.
The highway.
It'll wash out the highway, which will bring a lot of, a lot of people to bear, including themselves to protect it. UDOT would be there to protect, uh, the railroad would be involved in that concern because they're also right there.
Other side, yeah.
Well, and as per your earlier presentation, u- usually those major erosion events happen with the spring runoff, not with the. With the monsoon event, and the spring runoff is less of a surprise. In other words, they might be able to turn off the flow.
Yeah, they, they, they. They, they, they said they're going to have um gauges on both sides, so, so that they can be aware, not only to shut flow down from both directions. But also to know if there's a pressure drop or break.
So Richard and I discussed this and we, we decided that the best course would be to bring it before the commission because we feel all the same things that you felt. Yeah, we felt all the same things you're feeling about.
All the reservations.
Right.
It, it makes you really nervous about the line by Paragona that we looked at. I mean, what is it, four feet deep at the, at the most? You know the line along the highway you talked about?
Oh, yes.
I mean, what is it, four feet deep?
Four feet deep.
And it's a high-pressure gas line. It's scary how, how shallow.
We cannot, we cannot.
They should have never been allowed to put that in that shallow.
And we can't do anything to, to put in a bar ditch.
It floated one time, didn't it? I think it floated.
I think they said that.
Got so much water.
I've seen it, yeah, I've seen it.
Terrifying.
Yeah.
And high-pressure gas lines kill people.
You want me to reach out to Enbridge and ask him to bring a rep- representative?
I would be so bold, commission, to suggest that maybe um assign a liaison from the commission. To meet with Rich and Enbridge, and I'm happy to be there as well, but, I mean, or if you want, you can bring it back to an actual meeting, but. Um, it, it seems like it ought to be straightforward enough that if you wanted to assign a liaison for that task.
I just don't want us to have our hands tied once we grant it. I want to have some kind of language in the easement that says. If we tell you you have to move it, you have to move it. You don't tell us to pound sand.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I don't think that's something, I, I think it'd be more fair to them to say no versus have that.
Right.
I mean, they're not, they're not going to move a line once they put it twenty-seven feet deep and encase in concrete. It's, that's not reasonable.
Right, right. Well, we would have shortly appreciated moving that line in Paragona.
Yep.
So, just, just get depth for us so that we could do something.
Yeah.
This.
Maybe we make them.
From an engineering point of view, this doesn't bother me. From an engineering point of view, it doesn't bother me, from a legal point of view.
And to clarify, Rich, the, the hashed area on the map?
Yes.
That is the entirety of our parcel, is that correct?
No, that's the parcel they want. See, apparently, back in two thousand and five, for that Quichapah Channel. We obtained uh legal ownership all the way to the nursery.
Okay.
Now, that's a portion that Cedar City maintains. They actually maintain it to the nursery. We maintain it from the nursery out to the Quichapah.
We need to move on, we're.
Yes, so what do you want me to do, commissioners?
I'll be a representative if you'd like, and I, because I work with you on this stuff, I. What do you, go back, tell them our concerns, and then if you want to have a meeting, give me a call, I'll come.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yes, yes.
So do we need to table this or, or officially or not?
Sure.
You would, I don't really think it was an action item anyway, was it?
Was it?
Well, and you, you could just take no action.
At a possible approval, but.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm, I'm happy to just put in the notes that Commissioner Cousins will act as liaison.
Okay.
And, and for future discussions with Enbridge and Rich.
We'll contact him today or tomorrow and, and it may be on the commission meeting next week if we get satisfactory answers.
Sounds good. Thank you, Rich. Okay, nine, discussion of possible approval of an annual contract with the state of Utah for Monument Replacement and Restoration Committee. MRRC, funding of up to twenty-eight thousand, seventy-six. Twenty, twenty-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents, Carrie. And that's another acronym we can add to the thousands we already have.
Okay, so as part of the duties of the Iron County Surveyor, um, I am supposed to monument all of the PLSS section corners. And so the state has a grant to help the counties to do that. Um, for the last four years, I have put in for that grant. In twenty-twenty-two, we got fifty-four thousand, and twenty-three, we got forty-four. Last year, we got twenty-eight, and then, of course, this year, they are giving us another twenty-eight thousand. So I just wanted to show you guys what we do with that money, so um, as part of the deliverables, there's two things they have to do. One of them is give a tie sheet for every monument. Um, the tie sheets tell you what the monument is. Um, this one is a BLM monument that was put in in nineteen-ten, which I thought was pretty cool. And then they have to take pictures of it. You can see it's in a pile of rocks. This is um, in Paragona, in the foothills of Paragona. Um, they give you, of course, all the information of where it is located. And every one of those is filed in my office, and then they're also sent to the state. And I think there's, and this is the other part they give us, is a survey, a record of survey. So this record of survey shows all the monuments, and then it shows that they've done, and then it shows the bearings and distances between those monuments, which. Is super helpful in the recorder's office. We're hoping eventually to get all that information onto our GIS map. That's a whole nother project, but we're going to start working on it. Um, and then, of course, that just makes our parcels more accurate. Which is going to be a great help.
It also helps surveyors down the road locating monuments.
I spent half my young.
Trying to find, kicking over sandbrush.
Yeah, it's actually kind of cool. I like, I kind of think they're cool, and I actually, that would kind of be a fun job to go out there and find those. Yeah, yep. Okay, so, and like I said.
Day we had Brownie Platt, and he just knew where they all were.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Steve's dad.
Yeah, well, I, I ideally would like to eventually get the whole county done, and again, um, we're just responsible for the ones on public land. No, on private land, not public land. The BLM does the ones on public land. Um, okay, so for this year, I am just asking that we approve the grant for twenty-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents.
Okay.
Cool. I move for approval of annual contract with the state of Utah for Monument Replacement and Restoration. Committee funding for up to twenty-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents.
Second that motion, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Perfect.
Motion carries, thank you, Carrie.
I have, I need to just sign the contract.
Oh.
Will you make sure you get us a copy of that?
You can date it. Thanks. Uh, okay, where are we at? Um. We're ten. Review and ratification of contracts for positions, public defense administrator, social worker, and administrative assistant. Sam.
Uh, commissioners, uh, these are contracts that we've already had in place. Uh, this is continued employment, no changes. For Candace's position, her assistant and the social worker, I think it's Angelica Joe is her name. Um, in any event, they have been signed by Commissioner Cousins and fully executed. I'm just asking the commission to formally approve um the execution of these contracts so that they can be uh filed and kept until the next time they're updated. That's all for this item. Also, just say that we've recently executed an additional contract uh to replace a public defender. Um, his name is Rick Smith, Richard Smith, and uh that'll be on the next commission agenda. But uh for today, these are the only contracts we're asking you to consider. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No.
No questions.
Pretty standard. Go ahead, whoever's turn it is.
To make a motion to approve uh contracts for public defense administrator and social worker. And administrative assistant.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Personnel, who's doing personality?
Jen is here.
Hello, Jen.
I'll text her. Okay.
How about if I read them?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
That'd be great.
Uh, personnel number one, recorder, we're short on time today. Recorder, request for approval of transfer for Lisa Witt. From a full-time deputy clerk to a full-time deputy recorder. Ownership specialist effective July twenty, or July sixth, two thousand twenty-five. In the Sheriff's Corrections Area, uh, number two A, request for approval of new hire Levi Artega? Arteaga as a full-time corrections deputy, one, backfill of a vacant position effective July sixth, two thousand twenty-five. And three, assessor, uh, DMV. Uh, request for approval of new hire, Emma Adams, is a full-time Cedar City DMV technician, backfill of a vacant position effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, I move for approval of, I mo- I make a motion to approve everything you just said.
Second.
Reg- regarding item eleven.
It's been moved in second in a really interesting way. All in favor?
Aye.
We already, sorry, man.
Circumvented you.
Can I, can I?
Wasn't pretty, but.
No.
Oh, you can't. We knew you'd have a bias. We're really sorry, John. Sorry, Jennifer, we're hurting for time today.
Don't worry.
Um, but I think we got it. Is there, do you have anything else to add?
I'll just bring it to sign.
Uh, is there anything dealing with county boards or anything like that? I don't know anything, uh.
And our attorney just split.
And we. We uh, um, I don't, we have some administrative meetings after, real quick, the, a no-closet session, John, right? Okay, so chair will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.